Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Hillsborough Planning Board Meeting. It's May 2nd. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Weinstein, Mr. Dedman, Mr. Chair Sarachi are absent. Mr. Pezen?
Present.
Scobbo?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Commissioner Leponti?
Here.
Mayor Delkord?
Here.
Next up on the agenda would be the consideration of meeting minutes from March 14th, 2019. I'll just, it should be in your pack if you just want to take a look at it and then if somebody have a motion to approve them.
Mr. Chairman, all members are eligible except Mr. Scobbo.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call, council, or a roll call on the meeting minutes of March 14th, please?
Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Commissioner Leponti?
Yes.
Mayor Delkord?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julie? Yes. Okay, next up on the agenda would be, I don't think there's any consideration of resolutions, any planning board business. Is there, would there be any business from the floor not regarding tonight's application? Okay, seeing none. Next up on the agenda, we have a consideration of an ordinance, Ordinance 2019-10, amending the GA Gateway A District to add a new subsection K, Mixed Use Inclusionary Overlay District. Mr. Maske, you want to give us some background on it, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On April 23rd, the Township Committee introduced an amendment to the zoning ordinance and has forwarded it on to the Planning Board for your comment. The proposed ordinance would amend the Gateway A Zone to create a mixed-use inclusionary overlay district. The district would be applied to lots 66 and 67 in Block 15501. That's the, also known as the cost cutter site at the southwest corner of the intersection of Route 206 and Andrea Avenue. The amendment would add single-use multifamily residential buildings and drive-through restaurants to the list of permitted uses, but only when constructed as part of a mixed-use development. The amendment would also include appropriate design controls for all the uses within the district, within the overlay district. The total number of dwelling units in the district would be capped at 118, in combination with a minimum of 50,000 square feet of commercial space. This would be an inclusionary district, 24 percent of the dwelling units or 29 of the total units would be required to meet affordability standards. The primary purpose of this ordinance is to stimulate the redevelopment of the cost cutter, the former cost cutter shopping center. In addition, the inclusionary requirements will contribute to the township's effort to meet its court-senposed affordable housing obligation. The Board, as I said, is being asked for any comments it may have tonight. The public hearing at the Township Committee is tentatively scheduled for May 28th. Are you happy to answer any questions any of the Board members have?
Is it a drive-in restaurant, or?
It would permit a drive-through restaurant.
Okay. And then the affordable housing and other retail as well, or?
Correct. It's basically, what was it, 1.2 lots. As I say, the old cost cutter shopping center is in the front and in the back is a, is it basically a vacant lot stretching back to the housing development that's behind the property? This would permit, basically apartments to be constructed behind the shopping, what is now the shopping center, and allow some flexibility to repurpose, retrofit, redevelop the front part of the site.
So it's not a complete tear-down, it's, it'll kind of?
I mean, that could, it doesn't prevent that, but it doesn't, under this amendment, it doesn't require them to do that. It could be a mix of maintaining, rehabilitating some of the existing building, taking it apart down, adding new to the site, et cetera.
Anybody from the Board have any questions, comments?
What's the present use allowance for that, GAA?
It's, it's commercial. I think the one thing that's not permitted, that the major thing that this amendment would permit that is not permitted now is a single-use multifamily building. The way the ordinance is now, the GA, it's an odd sort of requirement. You can build a, you can build residential units in the GA, but it has to be a budding, a residential development in the TC. Doesn't happen very often. So, in a way, it's a new use, but on the other hand, it's not a new use.
Yeah, I just had one question. I was curious about the height, but it looks like it, the limit would be three stories, which is consistent with other developments in town. It wouldn't be higher?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bernstein, do we have to open this to the public, or just?
You can comment, you can reflect the option.
Okay. Would anybody in the?
Make a motion.
I'm sorry. So make a motion to open it to the public to comment on this, on this ordinance. I'll see.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to comment on this ordinance? Or have any questions? Just come forward and step up to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Joseph P. Maloney, 27 Stuntwick Drive, Hillsborough, New Jersey. Just a comment, as you're well aware, I've been attending to Planning Board meetings. Speaking for myself, I'd like to see how this all meshes together. I mean, we have basically a brand-new proposal here that will be voted on later tonight. And it seems like the cost cutters, keeping the existing there, I don't understand how, you know, the overall plan for a downtown area there. Although I understand that this is the gateway, this leads into our downtown Hillsborough, I guess, like other citizens, I'm concerned about what does it look like 15 years from now? Do we have a hodgepodge of existing and new development, or that's basically it?
Quite honestly, you'll always have a hodgepodge of different things. We can't force anybody to tear down a building. So as properties become available or assembled, like the one tonight, this applicant decided to assemble certain properties and create a new development. We can only put options out there through the ordinance. So we're, the site, that's the subject of the ordinance, they could come in and build according to Gateway A standards tomorrow. This provides a little more flexibility to try and stimulate what should be a positive repurposing of the entire site.
Okay. One other question, it's a, for me, it's a technical one. There's a question about the drive-in restaurant that's being allowed here. When will the public be able to comment on that? I mean, we haven't really seen the plans, so.
Go ahead.
So, okay, when there's, when there's an application before the Board, what this does is simply offer up another option available to anyone who wants to develop the site. What they will do with the site, how they will develop it, will come through if this ordinance is recommended from the Planning Board. If the Township Committee adopts, then an applicant at some point will come before this Board seeking an application, and with that will come the answers, hopefully, to your questions on what the rest of all will look like.
Great. These are just the zoning, this is just the zoning. This is just the zoning. It's not the, it's not the site plan. Yep. Yep. I got that. You give the proposal a chance.
Yep. And eventually, we'll have the same, just like tonight, there'll be a site plan in front of us and we'll have the same discussion.
Great, thank you.
But we're at the beginning of the process, so, you know, it's a good time to ask a question.
Yep, thank you.
Sure.
On the top of Page 2, Number 4, the tract requirements, the minimum tract size, the lots are not merged in this, but they may be in the future, or the owner can decide which way he wants to do it? Are we going to end up with like a Brookhaven where it gets merged, then gets subdivided, then, you know, gets moved around, or what?
They have to start with 10 acres. If they chose to subdivide at some later date, the ordinance would permit them to do no more than two lots.
So it's two lots now, and they can keep?
It's two lots under one ownership.
And the maximum impervious coverage on the tract would be 70 percent. What's the current impervious on those?
I don't have.
I'm not sure if it's the same for both.
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
The GA impervious?
Yeah, it just says 70 percent would be in this ordinance, and I wondered what it was now, since some of the people are already having trouble with wet backyards in that area. Okay, the multifamily dwelling, 45 feet, three stories. I may have missed it. What's the distance of the building, the set, not setback, the distance that the building could be from the neighbor's property line? It may be in there and I'm just missing it.
It's in here, yeah. Two places, 30 feet from the tract boundary, so at least, buildings have to be at least 30 feet from the boundary, but there are also buffer requirements.
Okay, so it could be as close as 30 feet to the backyard boundary of some of the homes on, for example, Meadowbrook? Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, is there anybody else from the public that has a question on this particular So can, should we just keep it open to the public, or?
Open and follow.
Okay, so can we have, can I have a motion to close the public for comments on this ordinance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is closed. So, Mr. Bernstein, and?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, is a motion to recommend to the Township Committee for adoption of this ordinance, with or without conditions, that's a discernation of the Board. The recommendation is to adopt as proposed.
So with that, should we do a?
Motion.
A motion to approve, as Mr. Bernstein stated, this ordinance?
I'll make that motion, as stated. To approve it as written.
Okay, we do a roll call, please?
Second.
I'm sorry. Somebody second it?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Scobbo?
Yes.
Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Commissioner Leponti?
Yes.
Mayor Delkord?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julie?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks. Okay, next up on the agenda would be the applicant, LD Construction's LLC, Hillsborough Village Center.
I would say, this application has been carried from April 4th, 2019, without further notice.
Counsel?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Ron Shimannowitz here on behalf of the applicant, LD Construction. Unfortunately, I was not with you at that last hearing, but Mr. O'Grodnick did a great job in presenting pretty much the majority of the case. We hope to finish up tonight with some open issues. At that last meeting, we presented Mike Ford, our engineer, presented our traffic engineer, Jay Troutman, and we presented our architect, planner, Rob Larson. As the Board will recall, one of the main issues that came up was the concern over the access through the park and ride. So since that last meeting, we've done some homework. We have something to present to you, we hope you'll find favorable. In addition to that access issue, we want to speak to you about the trees tonight, how we plan to address the removal and replacement of trees. So we have two witnesses. We have Mike Ford coming back to present the access plan and the trees, and we have our last witness, Mr. Art Bernard, who's a professional planner, to give the planning justification for the height variance, as well as any relief on the trees. So with that brief introduction, unless there's any other housekeeping items, we'd like to recall Mr. Ford, who's still under oath.
Do we need to have them up on the screen, or are we all right?
They're coming.
Okay.
We lost signal.
Did you try again?
No.
Coming up.
Okay.
Cable coming?
I guess in the meantime, do we need to qualify Mr. Ford, or?
No.
We're good, okay.
Mr. Ford has something to pass out, but let's do it. Well, hopefully, the screen comes back, the cast. It's on. It's on strike. Thank you.
Pass it to the right, or?
Test it.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Shimannowitz, if I may. Mr. Ford, have any of your qualifications and all licenses changed since the last month?
No.
The Board wish to requalify Mr. Ford and put him through that torture?
I think we're all right.
Thank you.
Michael, you're still under oath from the previous meeting and are required accordingly.
I understand.
First, Mr. Chairman, before you, you have the screen.
Yes, thank you. There are, yes, thank you, Mr. Maske. There are three members of the Board who are not present at the April 4th meeting, who have signed certifications by absent Board members, examination of record eligibility to vote by viewing the April 4th, 2019 video recording. They are Mr. Scobbo, they're Mr. Hashtag, and they are the Chairman, Mr. Maloney. So you are all eligible, gentlemen, to vote on tonight's application, if it is concluded, if you so choose to. And Mike, before you get rolling, I believe the last marked exhibit was Exhibit A9, and I believe you're going to be introducing some new exhibits tonight, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that's a set of four plans?
Correct.
Mr. Bernstein, you wish to mark those as a set, A10, four sheets, is that acceptable?
That's acceptable.
So Mike, why don't we describe what Exhibit A10 is going to do?
Okay. Yeah, there's four sheets, above the sheet number at the bottom right-hand corner of each of the hard copies you received is the date, May 2nd. The first exhibit is the project as originally proposed. So that's basically identical to an exhibit you saw at the last hearing, with the exception of the viewport of the vicinity has been reoriented slightly so that you can see the park and ride and the, and over to the, to the north, all the way to the traffic signal by the post office on Amwell Road. And that leads me to the second sheet, which is our proposal for an alternative access driveway. The third sheet in the set of exhibits you received is the current landscape proposal, and the last sheet is more detail regarding the off-site landscape mitigation proposal. We discussed numbers at the last hearing. At this hearing, we're presenting a specific exhibit of how we intended, intend to accomplish the tree mitigation in total without, and that is with the absence of any request for an economic hardship waiver. As I stated at the last hearing, there's 782 mitigation trees required. We would provide them onsite, as well as off-site on other properties owned by the applicant, here in Hillsborough. So first, I think I'd like to address the access issue. At the last hearing, we discussed Board concerns, and rightly so, we appreciated the comments regarding this current proposal, that is, the initial proposal, with the direct access to the rear parking area of the Amwell Mall, and the concern about traffic circulating through what is a commercial parking lot. And we discussed some alternatives, and since the last hearing, we developed an alternative, and I'll, I'll just highlight where we're going with this, is that just to the north of our site, and the Amwell Mall site, is a property known as Lot 3.02, owned by the Township, which I think initially was constructed as a park and ride. That is, has a bus stop in it, and some approximately 40 parking spaces. Currently, and we discussed this at the last hearing, it's utilized by Hillsborough High School students to park there and then walk to the high school. What we proposed, and this, and I'll go to Sheet 2, is a new configuration of that park and ride, to essentially bring back all but three of the existing 40 parking spaces on the park and ride site, still maintain the ability for it to be utilized at some point in the future as a park and ride with the circulation of buses through and into the bus stop and back out onto Amwell Road. But we've proposed a modification that would include a direct driveway from the applicant's site through the, what I'll say is the east or rear of the park and ride, directly to the driveway that leads to the traffic signal at Amwell Road by the post office. That would impact about 15 parking spaces that are currently at the rear of the park and ride. We would bring back 11 of those parking spaces in the area I'm highlighting now, that is three at the south side, and then eight immediately adjacent to the bus stop. And then we would restripe the parking spaces directly adjacent to the bus stop to bring back one more spot. So of the 15, we're bringing back 13. What we would do as part of the improvements to the park and ride or high school parking facility is seal coat and restripe that pavement. So any pavement, certainly we disturb, we would repair, and at the end of the day, they'd end up with a restriped park and ride. We've also proposed, and this will lead to the, what leads to the, and ties into the tree mitigation, is to utilize some of the proposed tree mitigation requirements, some of those 780 trees on the park and ride site, to enhance the view, the landscaping on the park and ride site. And with regards to specifics for traffic, this would be a one-way access aisle, so it would only be an exit only from the site to the park and ride. We had originally suggested no left turn even at this location, but in reviewing and discussing this with the Township staff, it was suggested that perhaps the left turn could be permitted here, which makes sense, because then people utilizing this access or exit driveway headed basically to Amwell Road and then northbound on Route 206 could use the right-out-only exit at the park and ride. And then what we would suggest is a possible alternative is perhaps this short-leg rerear that, that that could be potentially two-way. It's, it's either way, whatever the Planning Board or the staff would, would prefer, the access driveway itself is adequately sized, and that is width, for two-way traffic. We've proposed just one-way traffic at this location. And hearing loud and clear at the last hearing, some concerns about not only the circumventing or traversing a commercial parking lot with the access driveway, but even alternatives for that access driveway that have alongside of it parking spaces, we've proposed no parking spaces along this access driveway. So there's no parking spaces there. So there'd be no, and this is at the rear of the park and ride, so all of the students parking in the morning at the park and ride would be walking down Amwell Road toward the high school to the west, and none of those students would have to park where they would have to exit a vehicle and cross this driveway. They were heading toward the high school. Should I go on with the trees?
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, where, you have the one-way aisle, and then it essentially meets the entrance-exit of the adjacent lot, the sort of Bottle King building?
Correct.
There's a, there's that, that's a, there would be a stop on this side, on the aisle?
Yes, yes. We would have to stop and either make a right or left.
Okay. And then, the, the access that was originally going to go into the other parking lot, the Amwell, that's completely blocked off now?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no access there at all?
Correct.
Okay. On, on either side?
That's correct. And, and actually, let me point out, Mayor, one of the other enhancements we've proposed here is to discontinue this connection to the rear of the Bottle King site as well.
Okay.
So there'd be no through traffic through the rear of the Bottle King site. We thought that was a safety enhancement to improve an existing condition.
So, anyone that wants, then, from this area, go into the, sort of the bagel parking lot, would have to go into the park and ride and then, and then come into the other side?
That's right. They could make that left and then go into the, and then the same holds true for, at the end of that access aisle by the driveway leading to the traffic signal, people could make a right there and go into this commercial shopping center.
And then, is there any, or what will we do in terms of, I know there's still a traffic flow there, is there any crosswalk or, or other striping, so people leaving, mainly the high school kids, right, leaving the park and ride as they start to walk to the?
We propose, let me highlight it with the hand.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm just trying to make sure.
Let me, let me, I like, that's a good point. Mayor, let me speak to the pedestrian movement. We had originally proposed that direct driveway connection here, along with a pedestrian connection from this development to the Amwell Mall. We've completely disconnected that driveway connection. In fact, there's a trash enclosure there, so it would preclude it, but we've maintained the pedestrian connection. And then, on the Amwell Mall site, right now, there's no pedestrian crossing at this location. I think probably a, maybe a more common walking route. So we proposed a designated pedestrian crossing here, and that would be at a stop condition. And that would lead, I'll say, to the front of the Amwell Mall and then on to, you know, the sidewalks along Amwell Road.
And where would you expect, then, the pedestrians, if they're parked at the front of that park and ride, you know, closest to Amwell Road, where would they essentially cross through where the traffic flow is?
Okay, right now, there is a, there is a sidewalk along Amwell Road here, so I would expect those pedestrians to walk to this driveway and then on to that sidewalk.
Okay.
You know, it's, and then, you know, if they're closer to this end of the park and ride, there is a stormwater management basin that's a depression, so you really couldn't walk across the lawn along the front of the park and ride. You'd have to really go to either one of the two driveways to get to that sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is there something else on the access?
Yeah, just if, if you cut off that path to get behind the Bottle King, I'm just wondering, like, I know you're not allowed to drive through there anyway, there are signs there, but do trucks go back there for deliveries? And if so, do they normally keep going straight through, or would they have to turn around and go back in the way they came out? And would they be able to? The actual, the property line, and I'm highlighting it with the hand now, the property line between the municipal property and the Bottle King site is right down this landscaped island that, that, you know, we're proposing the driveway along it. I think that trucks could still circulate on the Bottle King site, on either end of the Bottle King site. That is, out through the traffic light, or around the end of the Bottle King site where the auto repair complex is. But this design really has the flexibility to maintain that driveway connection if, if the Board or the Township so chooses to, to maintain that. We would just have a stop condition at maybe three locations instead of just the one that we have now. I like the idea of blocking it off, but I was just wondering about that, access for trucks back there. Yeah. And if there's no further going in there, like, how many, is the only way to get into the development from 206? But this design really has the flexibility to maintain that driveway connection if the board or the townships so choose to maintain that. We would just have a stop condition at maybe three locations instead of just the one that we have now.
I like the idea of blocking it off, but I was just wondering about that access for trucks back there.
Yeah.
And if there's no further going in there, like, how many, is the only way to get into the development from 206?
Well, that's, with this being one-way completely, the whole driveway, the only entrance would be from Route 206. If the board were to permit this short throat here to be two-way, then somebody that, say, for example, was in Amwell Mall and wanted to go back home, they wouldn't have to go out on Amwell Road 206 to get back to the site. They could come in this, this direction. Did you follow that? Let me, that would be this small throat right here. Could be two-way. The applicant is fine with it as one-way.
So if you were coming from the post office and trying to go across the street, you could go into the Bottle King, but you couldn't go up the one-way?
That's correct.
Right, okay. So that would be, there'd be a stop sign there, I guess, or do not enter?
Do not enter.
Do not enter.
Right.
Okay.
Right now, yeah.
Wouldn't prohibit any access from that, but it would just mitigate some of the people coming out? You couldn't come in?
Right.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm...
We heard the concerns of the board members loud and clear, and we felt this proposal really helps to address the access alternative and minimize the pedestrian and traffic interaction to the greatest extent possible.
Anybody else on the board have any other comments? Any of the professionals? Bernstein, Mr. Maskey, Mr. Yarrow?
Quickly, if the board chose to accept this alternative, you'd work with Mr. Euro about the proper signage, stop signs, no left turns, et cetera, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing further.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one more.
Sure.
Can you, Mike, can you just review the, kind of the before and after parking situation? So on the park and ride, in the end, it'd be three less spaces, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and on the main site?
Yeah, I have the numbers.
Okay.
I can, on the main site, we're required to have 461 parking spaces. Our prior proposal had some 470, 468 parking spaces, but because of the reconfiguration of this small parking area immediately adjacent to the park and ride, we'd be down about seven parking spaces. What we would end up with is 463 spaces on-site, which is two more than what's required. And if the connection to Lot 16 to the south were to happen, we would lose two parking spaces there, which would bring us right at the 461 required parking spaces. And we would demonstrate all this to Mr. Euro's satisfaction with the final site plan layout. This exhibit I'm showing you right now shows the 463 on-site and even the detail of how we would accomplish that connection to Lot 16 to the south and go from eight to six spaces along that small area there. So we'd be, we'd still be totally compliant. No relief would be required with regards to parking.
Would those parking spaces be the same size as they are now?
In, on-site, yes. And in the park and ride?
The park and ride?
What we, since the last meeting, besides developing this concept, we did a detailed survey of the park and ride. In fact, there's some space, you know, spaces that are not really striped, I'll say, to see them well now, the handicap especially. So we would, you know, make that improvement. There's a row of parking spaces right by the bus stop that are, some of them are nine, some of them are 10 feet wide. We would make them all nine feet wide, and that would be consistent with the parking spaces in the entire parking area immediately adjacent to Amwell Road. So they'd all be nine-foot-wide spaces, but for the handicap parking spaces, which are, you know, a different size in accordance with the ADA standards.
Mr. Ford, real quick, just refresh me, the yellow is the boundary of the property. What do the little red colors denote?
That is simply just some illustrations of different types of landscaping along our boundary. We didn't use all green. Some of the landscape plantings are shown on the illustration as red. If you see down the side property lines?
Mm-hmm.
That's all it is, yeah.
Okay. Did you want to talk any further about the landscaping or the tree mitigation?
Yeah, I can, one more item.
Yeah, I just have one other question. As it relates to the aisleway, and I know we pushed you guys to do this, is there, can we put some type of maintenance agreement in place so that eventually as that road require, or that little aisleway requires continued paving because of the traffic, that that's a, that's a project responsibility, not a township?
Yes, we can, we'd have to work with the township committee for, you can, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
In fact, the whole, the whole proposal's going to require township...
Yeah, yeah, but I just, in particular, the paving of that aisleway, that's on the township property, right?
Yeah. All of this is going to require committee approval.
Specifics with landscaping, and I'll go right to the numbers. There's really no substantive change since our last presentation. That is, the 782 trees proposed would be provided in accordance with the tree mitigation ordinance. The illustration I've shown here is an enhanced landscape plan since the initial submittal that shows 566 plantings of trees on-site, which leaves us with 216 that would be accomplished off-site. And we presented at the last hearing a proposal to provide those plantings at other locations and properties owned by the applicant. I'd like to go to, the next exhibit is the detailed on-site landscaping, that's Sheet 3, but Sheet 4, and that is identical to the rendered version. Sheet 4 is an illustration of some more detail of exactly how the off-site plantings would be accomplished in the Hillsborough Business Park on Raider Boulevard, Jill Court, Stryker Lane. The applicant owns and controls those properties. We've shown a proposal for detailed landscaping here. That would be subject to review and approval by your professionals, and that would include some plantings along the median in the middle of Raider Boulevard, basically in front of the Hillsborough Cinema, back to the Hillsborough Business Center to help enhance that entire area. And then back to Exhibit Page 2, we proposed, there are some existing trees on the township's park and ride. We proposed about 30 to 33 trees there, which would bring us up to the 682. And what we would say to the board that, as any condition of approval the board may grant, we would satisfy your professionals with the details of all these landscape plantings. And should it be determined that, for example, there's 30 trees that can't be fit, planted, or should be placed somewhere else, we would offer to provide the contribution to the township in accordance with the ordinance. And then finally, as a detail element, the township tree mitigation ordinance has with it a maximum percentage of trees to be removed. There's a 20% maximum for a residential property development and a 60% maximum for a commercial development property. This is a mixed-use property, albeit in the TC zone too, that has specifics about its board discretion as to the trees that get removed. But I'd like to say to the board, as a technical nature, we would, I think technically require relief, that is, in the form of a variance from the tree mitigation ordinance for the maximum percent of trees on-site to be removed. We have 308 trees on-site. In order to accomplish this proposal, we're removing 258 of those, which is about 84% of the trees on-site. So we'd need technical relief for that 20 and 60% max.
Mr. Ford, a question in reference to the trees you're proposing on the islands of Raider Boulevard and, I guess, in the park and ride. Who is responsible for maintenance of those? I understand it's part of your plan to put them there. So the tree blows down, a limb comes off, we get a phone call and people say, well, it's in the center of Raider Boulevard, is that a township responsibility because we did not plant the tree? Or is that the applicant's responsibility?
I think this would be similar to, I'll say, any other residential development where you have that two-year guarantee, so the trees would have to be guaranteed for two years. But after that two-year period, they would come off the maintenance bond, it would become a township responsibility.
Mr. Maskey, is that consistent with what we've done in the past? I mean, I'm just, I just want to make...
Well, it's a little bit of mixing and matching here. Most developments are required to provide street trees.
Correct.
Which are not allowed to be counted towards the mitigation. Street trees, over time, depending on the township ordinance, does become the responsibility of the township in some cases. So I think it would have to be made clear, though, in this case, which way the board would want this to go, that these trees remain the responsibility of the property owner or they become responsibility of the township.
I mean, I guess that the question would be, I mean, there's already existing trees on Raider Boulevard and through some of the areas. How are we, as a township, able to determine that's our tree or that's the applicant's tree? When it falls down across the road, obviously it's a safety issue, and we're going to go ahead and address that. However, we all know that trees that are planted that are 10 feet tall 15 years from now are now 30 feet tall and they spread out 20-some feet, and they need maintenance. Things die, branches come off. So I think we need to be kind of clear on how do we distinguish that? I mean, I understand what we need to do, but I'm looking for a liability and ownership issue of how we work around that.
Yeah, I think from a practical standpoint, the, any tree that's planted on the owner's property would be their responsibility in perpetuity. And it would also carry with it the two-year guaranteed replacement. I think from a practical standpoint, the trees that are planted on municipal property, that'd be the park and ride or in the center median of a public road such as Raider Boulevard, once they become, are off that two-year maintenance guarantee, would become the township's responsibility, similar to, you know, any other tree that the tree mitigation ordinance would require be planted on, say, a recreational property or even donated to the town.
Would that be the same, like, trees that are planted or going to be planted on Stryker Lane? I mean, that's a township road, right, Stryker Lane?
Right. If it's in the township right-of-way, I would say it would be township property, but if the property, if the tree is planted on the applicant's property, it would have to be the applicant's responsibility.
Mr. Maskey, are we able to determine that? I mean, you know, I mean, I think it's a valid question.
While it's a lovely esoteric discussion in terms of the applicant telling you it's the township's responsibility?
Yes. Thank you.
The trees are being planted is a proposal to address a mitigation issue related to an economic hardship.
Correct.
While I understand Mr. Ford's desire on behalf of his client to sort of shift the burden, I think it's ultimately up to the board if they are going to agree to this as to whose responsibility the trees are going to be when they are planted within the municipal right-of-way, not at the direction of the municipality. I.e., if the board wants the applicant to be responsible for those trees, the board will indicate to the applicant that's what they want. The applicant then has two options. They can agree to that, or they can find places for the trees somewhere else. I think the immediate, oh, I'm planting it on Raider Boulevard, therefore it's your problem, while lovely and concept is not correct in law. You are not requiring them, if you were to require them to plant trees on Raider Boulevard as part of this application, that would be one thing. You're not requiring them. They're proposing to do so as a way to address an unrelated, a related issue related to their obligations for tree mitigation on this site.
Mr. Thor. You'd have to redo the calculations then, because you, you know, you'd lose some trees, obviously. So what's, what's that tipping point for you?
Yeah, it should be noted that street trees are not allowed to be counted towards the mitigation. So if you're planting street trees, technically you can't count them as meeting your obligation.
Right.
Yeah, that, we're not set on planting trees in the middle of Raider Boulevard. We just thought it actually would be an enhancement to that existing, you know, landscaped area now.
I'm not disagreeing, but I mean, from a practical, you know, mowing and maintenance.
Right.
It's easier because you got to get the machine up over the curb to drive it straight down instead of around trees and get off and string trim it and then go down. I mean, I understand the beautification piece of it, but from a maintenance standpoint, it's more maintenance to take care of them when they're there.
We can find another place for the trees in the island in Raider Boulevard, and with regards to the trees along all of the internal roadways in Hillsborough Industrial Park, the applicant maintains them now and would be fine with continuing to maintain those as well as any new trees.
Or if we decide we don't want those trees, you would just pay into the fund those trees that we decide to take out?
We would have to mitigate in that way, yeah.
If we decided we don't want anything in Raider Boulevard, you got 18 trees there, we just pay the 18 trees into the fund.
Right.
Okay. And would that be the same for the park and ride as well?
Correct.
Okay. So would the applicant be agreeable for the maintenance of those trees in the park and ride, or does he want to just pay into the fund for that as we're doing for Raider Boulevard?
Want to take a minute?
Take a break?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Take a five.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back, we are back in session.
Okay. Regarding the last question, maintenance of the trees in the park and ride, the applicant would agree to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And with regards to the Raider Boulevard, we can find another place for those trees? That becomes a maintenance issue?
Yeah, I'm not saying it wouldn't be nice to be there. It's just, you know, over time goes by, people forget, we get a call, we're going to go out and address it. We just wanted to make sure that, you know, somebody's not pointing a finger, well, we didn't put it there and it fell on your car, and, you know, it happens, you know, it's life, so.
And there's probably going to be a lot of trees added to the property itself, so you don't need them in the median as well.
I mean, the park and ride, I think it's, to me, that's a, I appreciate that offer. I think that's very nice, I appreciate that. I was just, just a question.
Okay.
Open it to the public? Okay. All right, so that, at this point, I'd like to have a motion to open it to the public for this particular professional?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so is there anybody from the public that has a question for this professional? Please come up to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Susan Gulliford Hunt Club Road. On Exhibit Page 2, showing the park and ride? Okay. The little fr- thing, the thing you have going out, exiting your site through the park and ride, did you state that was going to be one-way?
Yes.
Okay. So your main entrance and exit is the one off of Route 206, that's sort of a secondary one. If there was an emergency and that front had to be closed, could it accommodate two-way traffic?
The other driveway, yes.
Yeah, the one-way driveway could be changed in an emergency to allow in and out.
Yeah, we've actually suggested to the board, if they wanted a piece of that to be two-way now, that we could do that. It's wide enough for that.
No.
No, no way. No, it's, no, it can't be done.
Well, I won't speak for the board, I'll speak for myself. I'd rather have it one-way, but if it can accommodate emergency traffic, certainly we could do that in an emergency, but I...
They could, they could drive in the opposite direction in an op- yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ford, would it have to accommodate an emergency vehicle anyway by code, correct?
Correct.
All right. All right. Is there anybody else from the public for this witness? Keep it open or?
No.
Okay, so can I have a motion to close?
Just leave it open.
Okay, so we will leave it open.
Done with that, so Mr. Shemannowitz is next witness.
Okay. Our next, thank you, Mr. Ford. Our next witness is our planner, Mr. Art Bernard.
Good timing.
Okay, so we need to swear amen?
Is the testimony a give, like, is it true, the whole truth, nothing to truth?
Yes, I do.
Do you think so, you may for me?
It's Art Bernard. Last name is P.E.R.N.A.R.D.
Do we need Mr. Bernard's credentials, Mr. Bernstein, or?
Mr. Bernard would just put the mic slightly closer to his lips. It would be nice. And Mr. Bernard would briefly, and I underline the word briefly, your credentials.
I'm a managing member of my own firm. I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner with over 40 years of experience in land use planning and affordable housing. For eight and a half of those years, I served the Council on Affordable Housing, leaving as its executive director in 1994. Since 1994, I've worked as a consulting capacity for 27 municipalities, worked with private sector clients all over the state before local boards, worked with my public and private sector clients as an expert witness in most of the vicinages of Superior Court, and served the Superior Court as a special master in six municipalities.
Thank you, we'll accept your qualifications.
Slacking.
Art, if you could provide the planning justification for the height variance the applicant's seeking as well as the relief on the percentage?
Mr. Shemannowitz, could you speak into the mic, please?
You have rules.
Art, if you could provide the planning justification for the height variance as well as the relief from the tree removal percentage?
I will. I should add that we have two existing non-conformities and I just want to mention what they are. The existing shopping center has a footprint of 20,292 square feet. The ordinance permits up to 20,000. It has a length of 212 square feet. 200 feet is permitted. The ordinance permits a maximum setback of five feet. This shopping center is setback 171.57 feet. Now, these, as I said, are existing conditions and the applicant is doing nothing to exacerbate these conditions. The two new variances that we require are for height of the mixed-use buildings along Route 206. The ordinance permits a height of 45 feet and the applicant is proposing 49 feet. And we're also seeking relief from the section of the ordinance that limits the trees that can be removed from the site to 20 percent. And I'm going to take you through, we'll start with the positive criteria on the height. When your, what your ordinance reads, when a building fronts on a street, your ordinance measures the height from the grade of the front of the building to the peak. Now, this site drops off towards the street, so the elevation at the front of the building is lower than the elevation on the remaining portion of the building. So, although if you measured the height of the building, around the building, for the most, it would comply. In the front of the building, because of the loss of elevation as it drops off towards the street, we're not in compliance. We're at 49 feet instead of 45 feet. So, the request for relief is based on the slope of the property or physical condition of the site, so I can justify the relief based on the C1 criteria where the variance is granted because of the physical characteristics of the property. The strict application of the ordinance would create an undue hardship. In this case, the hardship would be a redesign of the building at flatter roof, which is exactly the opposite of what your master plan and your ordinance call for in your town With regards to the trees, this is again, is relief can be based on the physical characteristics of the site because the middle of the property is full of trees. And the hardship would be that without the strict application would result in the applicant not being able to build your inclusionary development and promoting your town center I think there's so many, there are some important facets of your master plan that are promoted by this proposal, so I can also justify the relief based on the C2 criteria where the variances can be granted when the proposal advances various purposes of the municipal land use law and the benefits of the proposal outweigh the detriment. The courts with C2 variances have instructed boards to, when they're weighing the benefits and the detriments, to weigh the benefits of the entire proposal, not just the benefits of the relief that's being sought. In this case, the benefits of the proposal are clear. It advances your master plan goal of creating a town center and it's also making a significant contribution towards your affordable housing obligation. The pitched roof that adds some height to the building adds to the building's aesthetic appeal. I think the pitched roof is also consistent with the recommendations of your master plan on pages 18 and 21 and in your, also consistent with your town center zoning standards. The benefit of the relief on the trees is that the relief enables the applicant to make a substantial contribution towards your affordable housing obligation and also promote your town center vision. So, with that background, I find that the proposal advances various purposes of the municipal land use law, including purpose I, which is to promote a desirable visual environment. I think the architecture and the neo-traditional design advances the town center concept and the visual experience in Hillsborough. And I also find that it promotes purposes A, E, and G of the municipal land use law. And if you read those purposes from front to back, you're thought, left with two thoughts. One is promoting the appropriate use of land and to some public benefit. I think the use of land is clearly appropriate because the uses are permitted and endorsed in your, by your ordinance and your master plan documents and the public benefits through the creation of the town center concept and through the production of affordable housing. So, those are the positive proofs for the two variances. In terms of the negative criteria, I find no substantial detriment to the public good. The area of height non-conformity is relatively small, related just in the front of the mixed-use buildings. And the buildings, due to their location and the location of surrounding buildings, will not deprive any of the neighbors of air and light. In terms of the tree removal, I see no detriment to the public good. The applicant's providing substantial landscaping on-site. The applicant's providing substantial and new landscaping off-site. And in fact, the applicant is probably, I think, if I heard Mr. Ford's numbers right, he's planting more trees than he's taking down. In terms of the detriment to the zone plan, again, I find it would be de minimis because the proposed uses are permitted. Your master plan and town center standards promote the pitched roof, pitched roof design, the applicant's proposing. The deviation of height is relatively minor and technical in nature located in the front of the building. And the applicant is really doing its best to comply with the strict application of your tree removal ordinance on and off-site. In addition, in terms of your zone plan, this application includes a substantial contribution of affordable housing, which I think also always promotes the viability of your zone plan. So, I find that these C variances are warranted based on the C1 and the C2 criteria and I would urge the board to grant the relief.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
Any comments from the board for Mr. Bernard? Mr. Maskey?
Yeah, a couple of questions. There are a number of design waivers that are required. I don't, testimony has been provided on pretty much all of them throughout the hearings, parking, loading, et cetera. Are you going to go through them all or are you going to just depend on the testimony that's already been provided?
We're relying on the previous testimony.
Okay. And we'll review them before we finish. There is a variance required for the signs and we really didn't get much into the sign package. We did receive in the last few days a more detailed, or copies, I should say, of an exhibit that was shown at the last hearing. The town center zone does not allow freestanding signs. There are two freestanding signs proposed, so that would require a variance.
I'm not prepared to testify in the science tonight.
Okay.
So, is that something we have to?
On that issue, if there's the hope of concluding this hearing, I would probably take a break and speak to my client. We prefer to have a decision from the board and if we have to come back for signage, we'll come back for particularly the one that Mr. Maskey calls out, but I wouldn't make that decision without talking to my client. But if the board's prepared to act on the application and we're not prepared to provide justification for the freestanding sign, we would withdraw it at this time, but I would have to take a break to make sure that's okay with my client. But we were hoping to come to a conclusion tonight and get a decision.
Can we take a couple of minutes? Okay, let's, let's take five then.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Before the break, the issue was raised regarding the freestanding sign.
I'm sorry. Okay, we, Kaz, you ready? Okay, we are back in session. Go ahead, counsel.
Before the break, the issue was raised as to the prohibition of the TC zone as to a freestanding sign. What we'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is just finish up the public with Mr. Bernard and our architect is in a position to present that issue and the planning justification for the freestanding, for the variance for that. So, I think what we need to do is finish the public questioning of Mr. Bernard. If there is any, then we'll recall Mr. Larson on the freestanding sign issue.
Okay, fair. All right, so, excuse me, at this point, is there anybody from the public that has questions for Mr. Bernard?
No. Okay.
No questions from the public? Okay, counsel, you want to call your next witness then?
Our next witness will be Mr. Rob Larson.
So, Larson, have your qualifications changed from the last meeting on April the 4th?
No, they have not.
Has your licensure changed since then?
It is not.
Remind you, you're still under oath.
Understand.
Rob, why don't we start off with the section of the code that Mr. Maskey calls out, which is what we're actually going to justify the variance from? So, if you could just call out the section from which we're seeking the variance and then if you can get into what the freestanding sign proposal is and why it's justified.
Understood. So, I'm speaking now to the Town Center District, Districts and Standards, 118, 113.5, and I am under item J, which is signs. So, I guess this is going to fall on me because we read item B under Permanent Signs, which speaks to a comprehensive signage plan, which is what I presented at the last hearing. And it was our goal, it's been our goal, to make the signage plan be, that word, comprehensive, to fit in, to allow for the project to be identifiable, to circulate through, to know which building you're going to, to have vibrant and appropriate signage on the buildings. But I guess what we missed, and I appreciate Mr. Maskey's finding it, is that item C speaks to, "All permanent signage shall be affixed to a building facade." So, I will be speaking to about seeking relief to having signage that is part of the comprehensive signage plan, which I have presented to you, but is not mounted to a building facade. We're speaking specifically to, and this will result in me discussing, the three signs that we see called out as A, B, and C. Sign A is the primary sign. It's a 57-square-foot freestanding sign. It's made of stone and some crown detailing that's complimentary to the architecture of the adjacent mixed-use structure. It's about seven feet tall and eight feet long. This, to me, is a tasteful, appropriately proportioned and has the appropriate material. It is not massive nor is it overbearing, but it does create a project identification sign. When you're coming in, coming up and down Route 206, you're going to know that's where you are, right? It's going to lead you to knowing if you're a resident or if you're visiting a resident, "I'm at the Hillsborough Village Center." It's going to identify the retail as well. So, again, it is, I hope the board can appreciate, our approach was to hit every, check every box when it came to signage. So, as I'm coming down 206, I have a recognizable and readable sign at the entrance to the project. So, that is sign A, which we are proposing.
Just for the record, real quick, the exhibit you're now referring to was previously marked as Exhibit A7, the sign package, is that correct?
I believe it was, and I believe I handed out 11-by-17s to all the board members and as Mr. Maskey suggested, we did provide additional copies just a couple of days ago to staff. So, that first sign that I'm discussing is sign A, is a freestanding project identification sign right here. I'm not sure if you can see the arrow. It's at the entrance to the project. Considering that signs B and C are also not attached to buildings, sign B would be, or is shown on this diagram on my exhibit, associated with the old connection between the office retail complex behind. Obviously, this sign would be located appropriately to be adjacent to the entrance, but may actually become null and void if the board does not see that as a point of entry, right? So, that was to help understand those coming from the other side, that this project was in fact Hillsborough Village Center. So, sign B, we would seek, again, if the board felt it was appropriate to help navigate the connection to the Park and Ride, which has been discussed at length this evening. Sign C, you'll find in various locations and what I'm finding in just my experience as a professional working on many of these mixed-use developments or larger developments is that wayfinding signage is very helpful. I don't want to call it imperative, that's a very extreme word, but certainly necessary. It helps people navigate their way around these developments to understand, oh, my, you know, for example, my friend lives in Building 100, I'm going to get there and I'm going to get directed to how to get to Building 100. And in the past, and as will be the same here, it really creates safe navigation of the site for visitors, for emergency services, police, fire, ambulances and the like, to quickly and efficiently get throughout the site. You know, this has a few different drives and a few different directions you could go. So, we would seek to have these wayfinding signs, which are detailed in item C, in various locations as, I guess we would coordinate with your professionals to help promote safe navigation of the overall development. So, to speak to this as a variance, I have already discussed the type of signs we're proposing. But considering that all signage is to be by your ordinance mounted to a building, we would seek relief from that requirement to permit these freestanding signs as we're proposing and in line with your, item B of your ordinance, which is part of a comprehensive signage plan for a mixed-use town center development.
So, how many, are you talking about? Two or the freestanding?
So, freestanding, there would be one, sign A. Sign B would be a matter of the board's pleasure as to whether or not, I believe it speaks to the operation of the neck or, as Mr. Ford said, the throat of that entrance to the Park and Ride. If we felt it was necessary to identify that. And then the wayfinding signage...
That's not subject to variance, the wayfinding.
It is not, okay.
That's permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Maskey. Thank you, Mr. Maskey. So then we're really talking about one and possibly two.
Any comments?
Yeah, obviously, if, if the board decides that's a, a one-way out, the, the necessary for that sign really goes away because you're not going in there, I would imagine, correct?
That's correct.
So then we're just talking on one sign?
And that sign is at the main entrance on 206, correct?
It is.
In your opinion, Rob, was that typical signage for a, a mixed-use development of this type?
Um, it is. It's, it's actually not, uh, oversized at all, in my opinion, having done quite a few of these recently. Uh, it's appropriate size, it's appropriately scaled and finished. Um, it's actually standing next to a building that has a four-foot grade changes, as, um, Mr. Bernard just discussed as well. So, um, it will, it will not, to me, it'll be tastefully placed, and it will be appropriately mixed with the overall character of the entrance to the development. Uh, there would be an opportunity to put a number or any other, uh, s, you know, whatever we've, you felt was necessary to help identify this project.
How is that sign going to be illuminated, the entrance sign? Is that just an uplight on that sign? Or is there a plan for illumination on that sign?
I believe we would want to use halo, uh, lighting, so these would be channel-mounted metal letters, which have halo lighting behind them.
Does the front of the sign face 206, or is it perpendicular? So you see it?
So this is actually two-sided, and it has, um, although it's proximal to one building, it would be two-sided, and it would be perpendicular, set perpendicular to Route 206.
So you could see it either northbound or southbound?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Maskey, does that comply with the variant, uh, any variance needed for the size of the sign, or is it implied?
Well, because there is no, it's not a permitted sign, there are no criteria for the size of the sign. The, the other zones in town where they are permitted, it varies up to 15 feet high, 40 square feet, down to four feet high, 20 square feet, depending on the, on the zone that you're in.
So seven high is, is not out of, uh, out of whack, so to speak?
No, it's not excessively high, no.
Okay, thank you.
How far is it from the building?
And is, is the view that the sightline would allow it to be seen going north?
Um, I could have, uh, I could ask Mr. Ford to more accurately, accurately represent this, but it appears to be about, uh, 20 feet. Um, and its front line is set with the front line of the building, so it would be a little longer, uh, you would have a little bit shorter view of it as you were coming from the south heading north, but you would be able to see it. Um, you would certainly get more recognition of it coming from the north heading south.
Excuse me, can you just identify where the main sign is located again?
Oh, no, your plan, and I'll plant back up there again. So it's actually sitting right here.
So it's in the grassed area north of Building G?
That's correct. So here is...
So then, Mr. Ford, your site plan will need to be modified because your site plan currently shows it in the concrete island in the middle of the driveway.
Yeah, and, and if, uh, perhaps more visibility, it could be, that could be an optional location to place it?
Uh, my concern would...
You have an island in the middle of the driveway, and it would be beyond any sightline of the island driveway.
Well, I guess I was looking at it that it's only one way, it's, it's only a right-in, right? You're not making a left off of 206 to get into that.
No, our, our pending DOT permit includes a left turn in headed northbound.
No left out.
No left out.
Okay.
Right, correct. So that might be, you know, an alternative, more visible, appropriate location, if that works for the sign itself?
It certainly works for the sign, and I would, uh, obviously defer to Mr. Ford for the appropriate location of it for sight views, uh, sightlines and, and placement on-site.
That won't interfere with, uh, the view for the people coming out of the, uh, complex?
No, we would, again, whether it's placed, uh, to the side or on the median, we would be sure it's out of all, uh, necessary sightlines for vehicles operating.
Thank you. I would have to, Mr. Ford would have to provide more sightline information, because my, my concern is, if it is located in that center driveway island, based on the mass of that, that sign structure, that as people are coming out to make that, they may just sweep through, and they're going to have a visual blockage looking northbound on 206. And I, I would see that as a, a safety concern. Um, you may also want to check with the DOT to make sure of their parameters and their limitations, i- their jurisdiction over that island also. So the question to the board is really twofold. One, are you in favor of the variance granting the freestanding sign? And two, a condition would be that it has to meet the approval of the township engineer and other professionals, as well as NJ DOT regarding their own.
Oh, it's cool. Does anybody have any comments on that, or thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I personally think that's a possibility, you know, and I'm, I'm curious about the consistency with other signs that are in front of other developments. Maybe we don't have to answer that now, but if the, if the, if it satisfies and is consistent with, uh...
Well, as I said, it depends, it varies depending on the zone.
But like, in that area, like the, the shops, and, you know, there's other signs in that area?
Probably most of the older centers have freestanding signs now.
Right, but I wouldn't want this one a lot bigger, perhaps, than others.
I see.
But then again, Mr. Maskey, some of the other centers are more pylon-style signs, where this is a...
Correct.
...ground-mounted brick wall, basically. And what was the dimension of the sign again?
Seven feet.
Uh, it's proposed at seven feet tall and eight feet long and about, uh...
All right, so you have a seven, you know, you have a seven-foot structure that's eight-foot wide. It's pretty much, it'll almost half the width of your car.
And you were pointing, if they're making a right turn out...
As they're looking left.
They can't see.
That's, that's my main concern with the sign being located in that aisle.
Yeah. I actually liked it where it was.
Right.
But I, I just wasn't understanding that it would be visible by both sides, given where it looks like it is on the, on the, the drawing. But I guess if it's far enough from that building, there would be some visibility, but I agree, I, I almost like it better there because I think it provides a, um, a little bit more of a safety feature rather than being in that, in that middle median. I will say this also, is that, I, I think we do need, when you have that number of people in that development, I think you need some type of signage at the, at the entrance, so that people, as they're starting to approach that, know that they're going to be turning into that location, as opposed to, um, you know, traveling 206 and all of a sudden, uh, in an, in an instant realizing that's where they're supposed to turn. Um, so I, I'm personally not opposed to having a, a sign there. I, I'd prefer it where it is rather than in the, in the center aisle.
I agree. I think it's better to have it outside the sightline for people looking north, coming out, in my opinion.
Mr. Larson, could you, uh, for the viewership of people watching it on camera, could you show us on the picture where the, where you proposed the sign, yes?
So the sign would be sitting right here, perpendicular, so you'd really, you know, in this view, you'd only see a line, but, uh, so as you were traveling down the turn-in, you'd see it, and as you were coming from this way, you'd see it to the side there.
Okay.
So it would be placed somewhere right in this landscape area.
Thank you.
So, okay, I was going to talk about the sign, but, um, does anybody from the public have any questions for Mr. Larson? Come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Susan Gulliford-Hunt Club Road. I have a question on, I think you called it, um, A, the largest sign. Is that just the name of the development? Is that also a business directory sign?
It is proposed to be just a, uh, the name of the development. So we have written on there, um, "Welcome to Hillsborough Village Center." Whether that's the ultimate complete name, it is not, I, not intended to have individual tenants on it.
Okay. Now, since this is so close to the road, um, the businesses that are facing will have their own individual signs, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now, since last time when I asked, they weren't sure if those businesses were going to go through those buildings in the front, or possibly be divided and have a different business in the front and the back. Will there be any directory signs later that you might propose or consider pointing to the businesses that are in fact in the back of those buildings?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just considering the layout, so I'm, I'm looking at my client, but I'm also realizing that, uh, I understand that even the point of your question, which would be if you're entering a retail complex, maybe you want to see where I'm going. Uh, these are very exposed, so as you're along Route 206, you're going to see each sign. Uh, and then as you come onto the project, again, I have, uh, proposed in some of the signage details that there will be building-mounted signs for each tenant that will be apparent. So, um, I'm not, we, we, at this time, we're not proposing any directional, um, per-user signage, no.
Okay, so you're not anticipating if a business, um, set up shop in the back of your front, of your mixed-use in the front, that they would also want a sign up on the highway saying, "We're back there"?
We are not at this time.
At this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
But just, so, just to be clear, I want to make sure, because I think that we're answering the right question. Is there an intent that you would have a, the businesses along 206, with obviously the 206 frontage, and there could be a separate business in the back of that same unit that enters from the, uh, from inside the development?
Yes. So there, well, so we're speaking to how the space is demised.
Yep.
Um, so I, I do not believe, uh, that every tenant will necessarily be a through tenant. There may be a tenant who is accessed from the rear.
And would the only signage those have be in the rear, or would they also be, would they also have signage on the front facade on 206?
Okay, so they...
Any questions, Susan?
Let's have Mr. Gardner.
Who manages it?
Get the answer.
Hi.
Going to us?
I do. David Gardner, G-A-R-D-N-E-R. I'm a principal of, of the project.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gardner.
So, I'm envisioning this to be a lot like where we have, um, the five, not the Five Guys building, but the other building, um, where we have, so all of those spaces go through, and the, the tenants have signs, they have access on the front and the back, but we, at the moment, we have zero tenants. We don't have anybody teed up. We have a few people that are interested. So, we don't know. We're going to have to be flexible. I would imagine if you're a business, you'd, you know, the, the thing that's good with this kind of setup is you're so close to the highway, signage on that side will give good visibility to the businesses that are in there. Um, because there's not going to be, the way this is set up, there's not going to be a monument sign with the names of the businesses.
Right.
So I'm, I'm envisioning that we would have this, we would have, we would have the signage on the, on the highway side, but if somebody went through, and in, in most cases, I think that's what's going to happen, it'll be somebody who takes it all the way through. So we would have a sign on the highway, and then on the parking side...
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that's so much the concern, as much as it is if you have a different tenant on the backside that does not have 206 frontage, how is the visibility of their, where would the visibility of their signage sit?
Well, that's a good question. I think that we, if we don't have room to do it on the frontage, so that it's spaced nicely and feels appropriate, then they, I, I mean, that would, if, if what you just described happened, I would hope that we could fit them in on the, on the 206 side, so that they have some exposure to the 206 side, and then they'd have a sign in front of their place. But at the moment, we're not really sure how that's going to work out. We've had some of that situation happen, um, on the other, on the building that we have over, where the Pizza Hut is and the hair thing and the...
Yeah, I think the issue being, we just want to make sure that if somebody's looking for that business that's in the back, is there some visibility to know that they're there?
So the example, I think the Kumon, who we have, I think they did, they did not have any signage on the front, they only had a sign on the back. So, i- if we don't have room, then, you know, we wouldn't be able to do that. But we'll have to see how it, how it goes. But we're going to, hopefully, we're going to create a very pleasant signage package and get this very organized. I mean, our intent is to make this thing a, a real nice, beautiful, luxury project. And, and it is a little challenging because of the mixed-use thing, to try to figure it out, how to, how to make it work, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else in the public? Do you have any other witnesses, Mr. Smannowitz, or?
We do not.
Okay. Mr. Bernstein?
Anyone want a last chance?
Uh, I just, just before, um, well, because I know he's here, um, I just, and I don't know that we need to recall, but I'd just like to be, maybe for the record, that with the change in the proposed access, is there any change to any of the decision-making or any of the grading as it relates to the traffic? I would assume not, but I would like that, just on the record, as to how that...
Sure, we could have Mr. Troutman come forward and just confirm that. That's a fair question.
Troutman, just take your name for the record, please.
Jay Troutman, McDonough and Ray Associates.
Mr. Troutman, has it been any change in your licensure or certification since April the 4th of this year?
No.
I remind you, you're still under oath.
Yes.
Jay, you understand the mayor's question?
I heard the question, yes. Uh, since the, the new access still provides for exit capabilities, which is the key in my analysis, is to make sure I have rear exit capability. That's where I need capacity. Uh, there will be no change in grading. The only change is that, uh, there might be additional traffic entering from 206 instead of entering from the rear, but the entering traffic is not a level of service or capacity issue whatsoever. So there's no significant impact to any of the traffic calculations.
Thank you. That was, that was my question.
Thank you. Thank you.
There was one, one topic that was discussed, and I don't know if there was any, um, discussion with the Board of Ed as far as what the busing would be for this development, whether they're going to come in and pick up in-site, and was that addressed or brought?
I, I did review the video of that, and I, I do remember a comment, I think by Mr. Smansky, there was a preference to have it on-site, but...
Microphone.
Again, apologies. Uh, but since the last hearing, we, we haven't developed that issue any further, I imagine if the board were inclined to approve the application, there'd be a condition that we'd have to work that through. If the board wants to include some finding or recommendation on how that might work, the applicant is fine with that. You know, it's really up to the Board of Ed, though.
Well, I, I don't think that, and I'm not sure, the state, you'd have to ask the state to have a bus stop on 206, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
So they would have to have it approved, that which I'm sure they don't want to.
Well, I, I, I'm pretty sure we don't want to pick up on 206.
The board wants to place a preference as a condition of the application, that they work, they work out a bus stop or pickup within the development to be coordinated with the Board of Education.
Correct.
Right.
Just not on 206.
Yes, just for the board's, uh, information, when we, the, um, 206 Holdings project for the south on 206, that was, the, the Board of Education, they will, if you recall, they're going to pull in to their clubhouse, and that's where they'll pick up the children. The same arrangement was made with the Meadowbrook development, where once those streets are finished, the, the bus will be pulling in there and picking up the kids at the Meadowbrook side. So they, they have in the past cooperated and figured out a way to get the bus on-site.
Yeah. We did the same thing with the project off Amwell. Still working on that. Okay. Anything else from the board, or any of the professionals at this point? Do you make a motion to close to the public first?
One last.
Or...
Hurrah.
Any, any, I'm sorry.
For the public, you mean?
Yeah. Is there any other people from the public, any other persons from the public that would like to ask any questions at this time? that would like to ask any questions at this time?
Now, a motion.
All right, with seeing none, a motion to close to the public?
Mr. O'Ponny made that motion.
Second.
Mr. Pieson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are closed to the public.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to sum up a little bit, at least from our end, and I realize Mr. Schmanowitz wasn't at the first hearing, but I'm sure Mr. O'Grady gave him very good notes, so.
He did.
There are three variances involved. One is the height, one is the tree clearance greater than 20 or 60 percent, and the freestanding sign. The following waivers have also been requested, parking stall size and aisle width, the lack of a loading space, a parking buffer, landscaping around the refuse collection, a waiver for the off-site tree planting arrangement. The reason for that is the ordinance allows an option to either contribute cash to the fund, or to actually give trees to the Parks and Recreation Department. There isn't an actual option of planting on another property, so I would suggest that be considered a waiver. And I believe that's all the waivers and variances.
I believe there were some...
We can add a few.
Was that?
We can add a few.
I believe Mr. Larson ran through a few. I believe there was the maximum window percentage, 75 versus 100.
Yes, yes.
There was the height of the sills for the retail, 26 to 36 inches versus a proposal of 18 inches. There was the roof slope, four-on-12 proposed versus six-on-12 required. There was the not greater than three materials and textures and colors on a facade, where we're proposing greater than three. And there was the pigmentation of concrete required, where we're proposing stamped concrete. Those were the ones that came out of the architect's testimony. I don't know if Mr. Ford had any other waivers that you hit in your testimony that Mr. Maskey did not include, do you recall?
I think we asked for a technical relief on the spacing of some of the on-site lights, where 60 required is max, and we had a few that were slightly over that 60.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's stamped asphalt, not concrete.
Okay.
So the record's clear.
That's at the crosswalks, and then the sidewalks themselves would be standard sidewalk.
Catch them all?
I think we now have them all, yes. Thank you, Mr. Maskey.
Mr. Chairman, what we're seeking is, with the granting of the variances requested, according to the testimony given by Mr. Bernard and concurred by Mr. Maskey, the three variances requested, as well as the multiple waivers, the condition related to the school bus stop, the need for an agreement with the Township Committee relative to the park and ride site, and all other requirements and requests by the professionals, as well as applicable Township officials to approve this application as proposed.
And we might add that the final, the final tree mitigation arrangement, meet the approval of the Township Engineer and the Township Planning Director.
And also, do we decide that we wanted that road one-way, also?
Which renders the B sign unnecessary.
Right, renders the lack of a necessity for the freestanding so-called driveway sign, and for the access point from the property to the park and ride site to be one-way out toward Amwell Road.
I think that sums it up.
Got it all?
So with that being said, we have a roll call.
The motion is second. I don't have the authority to make motions in seconds, so you're out of luck, though.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Pieson?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Herr Stagg?
Yes.
Jim O'Ponny?
Yes.
Barry Delk-War?
Before I, just real quick, wanted to, this area, which has been targeted for our town center area for quite some time in our master plan, we've been working a long time to get to the point where we have a development that actually meets the town center plan. So I'd like to thank the applicant, Mr. Gardner, thank you, and for the professionals. One, for kind of kicking off this town center process, but also for working with us, in particular, as it related to the access process. I know the site, the way it's laid out, and some of the surrounding properties created some challenges, as it relates to some of the access points that we're talking about, but we appreciate the flexibility in working with us. It's certainly, what's presented tonight is significantly improved, at least in my opinion, from where we were last month. And I want to thank you for that, and I look forward to kicking off our town center process. So, yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't expect a resolution tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
No, yeah, don't yet. Mr. Chairman, there is a meeting scheduled for next week. At the moment, there is no application. However, we have a very, I will use the word anxious as an underline, applicant who had previous approval who wants their resolution approved yesterday, that being general rule. We hope to have that available. We may have one or two others. It's up to the board, whether you want to come in for the resolutions, or wait three weeks till the 23rd, where we do have an applicant, or two applicants on that night.
I will not be available on the 9th.
I won't be.
It's just resolutions, I think.
I'll be here for the 23rd, but I will be here for the 9th.
All right, we'll keep it on, if we hopefully will get a form. If there's anybody other than Mr. Scobbo and Mr. Wagner, at least in the group who's here?
I won't be available next week.
All right.
If it's just resolutions, I could be here.
Let's see what we can do.
All right.
Webex.
So with that...
You guys use Webex all the time.
With that, Mr. Chairman, the next meeting will be May the 9th, subject to availability of form for resolutions. The next application meeting will be May the 23rd. You have Amwell Terrace continuation, and you have a request for an extension from Terrace Industrial Park. So with that, would be a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.